Let's see, so the board has returned to open session. At this time, are there any public comments?
No, there's no one physically here.
Okay. At this time, are there any changes to the agenda? No.
No.
Dan, this is Jeff Miller. I don't have a change of agenda, just have a question for you or for Martha, which is, I know the public is supposed to have access somehow to this meeting through a recording or just I was wondering how that's working in practice. Does that, can Martha or Tom maybe?
Sure, I can comment on that. That's why we have Lorenzo, we have our BTV here, our BTV here is video recording this meeting, it's going out on live YouTube stream and it will be recorded for viewing at a later date, just like always. So even though he's recording a very small physically present group, he's recording it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Then next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Sure, and I'm just gonna shift the items on that agenda. It seems most pertinent, obviously, to start with what I had listed, originally as pandemic preparedness and has really now shifted to pandemic implementation planning. And I just want to spend just a few minutes and also give board members opportunity to ask if you have other questions. I know we've been communicating with families along the way and pushing out one-way communication, but I, you know, people keep using this word that this is unprecedented, ever-evolving, fluid situation for all of us. I just want to really take a minute and thank people and groups of people. I want to thank all of you as Board of Education members for thinking through all of this, for being aware of all this, for supporting our leaders and our teachers and moving forward with very unique planning in the midst of all this. I know also, most of you are now supporting your children's education at home and I know your day-to-day jobs have also changed and many of you are working at home. So just the added responsibilities on all of you, I thank you for that. I want to absolutely thank the district leadership team, our group of principals and our group of district office administrators who have really demonstrated in every way what leadership means and what leadership looks like in moving this process forward. I need to thank absolutely our teachers, our educators. I spent Monday addressing the group virtually through Google Hangout and then I was able to visit each grade level group in each department in small groups, socially-distanced small groups. And the work that our teachers were doing, the creativity, the determination, the inspiration, the clear connectedness and this clear goal of maintaining continuity of learning, pursuing continuity of learning for all of our students was, if there's a silver lining in any of this, it is indeed the work of our educators here in District 96. I want to use the word educators, as you know, I often speak broadly because this also really means our nurses and our school secretaries and our paraprofessionals. So I just had an email from Todd Gierman, our principal at Ames School, and I know this is true really at all five of our schools. Out of 380 learning packets that were created for students, 380 learning packets were picked up today. And I just haven't had a chance to get those final numbers from Central, Hollywood and Blight Park, but I'm sure they are the same. And that families, you know, jumped in and took responsibility for the parts we were asking them to connect with us and partner with us on. So truly amazing and just wanted to make sure that you all understood that and that our public understands that. Our custodial team has been doing some extra deep cleaning really for the past several weeks when we saw that this was perhaps happening and coming to this area. So they will be continuing to clean and deep clean as well as address some special projects that now they can address while the schools are empty, as they often do during our spring break period. And a special thanks to them. Our cafeteria staff, as you know, and I want to make sure the public understands, we are continuing to distribute lunches to students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch and all students. The state has asked us to consider lunch distribution for all students. On Monday, we had, I think, eight students show up, eight families show up for lunches. Today, it was 34. I expect that number to go up. We have about 300 students eligible for free and reduced lunch and I just also want to say that I encourage people to come and get that lunch, get those meals. Right now, we are doing a daily lunch distribution. That was the recommendation from our cafeteria team. They want to deliver fresh lunches. They're doing a grab-and-go sack lunch. People pull into the parking lot and they're hand-delivered something right there at the car window. We are gonna look at, is there some value in condensing that and making it sort of a multi-day lunch pickup? But that's something we'll look at and somewhat it's gonna depend on the foods that we have available and then how we'll look at other more, maybe more shelf-stable food moving forward. So again, I just want to thank sort of that group of our District 96 colleagues and employees and they have really just shown a tremendous amount of commitment and creativity. I know earlier today, I think Hauser is planning some virtual Spirit Week activities for kids and I know kindergarten teachers were busy recording morning storytime or afternoon storytime. We had some of our specialists and interventionists who work with small groups of children talking about setting up FaceTime appointments with each child and their family individually. So again, just really amazing, amazing things going on and wanted you to be aware. Certainly our parents, just mentioned the 380, you know, students who had 380 or whatever parents go with the 380, picking up those packets today. I want to thank parents. I know this is a unique and heavy lift unlike anything that, perhaps nothing that's been done before. And just also assure parents that our district team is here, teachers are really here, teachers have shared email addresses and phone numbers and really people should not hesitate to reach out when and where they need help. Obviously, our goal in all of this is continuity of learning. And right now, there's a bit of a kind of convoluted overview of an Active God Day compared to an e-learning day, but really the overarching goal is continuity of learning. My guess is that there's going to be kind of a relaxation around what those different terms mean that really speaks to our imperative and our sense of continuing to advance, you know, our learned society and it really feels every bit as important as all that. Continuing to support our students also socially and emotionally, we know this is a time of great anxiety for really, for really everybody. Some of the teacher videos that were shared with me this morning were just cheerful and uplifting, you know, early childhood, kindergarten, first grade, certainly working with our youngest children, trying to reassure them and just present sort of an aura of happiness and the joy of learning. So again, I just have to share all that with all of you and continue to say thanks and thanks and thanks. I know the big question is, what is the long-term plan here? You know, I think as frustrating as it is, that long-term plan just is not known. We have identified e-learning through April 6th with a goal of returning students to school on April 7th. I'm hearing the same news that you're all hearing. I don't have a different pipeline to a more informed message around that now. What I'm hearing is that that informed message just is unclear, right? And what is the role of returning students to school in terms of slowing this pandemic, flattening the curve, so to speak? And I will, my commitment is to continue to communicate with our parents on a weekly basis, to continue to communicate with the staff on a weekly basis. I think once we get past April 6th or as we approach April 6th, we may need to do sort of a reset potentially on some of those lesson plans. I mean, teachers really put together lessons that took children through April 6th. Some will be able to sort of pick up. Middle school, for example, is a lot easier to just kind of continue to push out more lessons with some of the younger children. There may need to be some reset and some replanning that would go on. I want to assure you that we'll stay in close communication. I have really appreciated Matt Buckley, our fire chief, who's really the village identified head of the pandemic team there. He has been in close communication. Our neighboring districts have been in close communication, the State Board of Ed, the CDC. The Illinois Superintendent's Association has been a great communication source for me as well as the National Superintendent's Organization. It is indeed truly a collaborative effort. And we will make sure that people are staying safe and staying healthy to the best of our abilities, but wanted to share all of that with you. And certainly, maybe not always typical during superintendent's report to do a lot of Q&amp;A with the board, but I'm happy to do that if there's anything that, questions you have on your mind or things you're wondering about, you want to ask so that we're making sure we're sharing that message with the public.
Well, just in general, I guess, you know, wondering, it's interesting to hear that your timeline is still April, what was it, April 6th?
April 6th, last day would be e-learning, April 7th, children return to school. But again, I do think that's gonna get modified by the governor, you know, not directly by us. I think there will probably be some additional guidance on that coming out.
As long as it's, when that, should that become available, I guess, as long as we're communicating with that and we're being transparent.
Absolutely.
To the public on that as much as we can, although likely will be communicated for us.
Right, right, but it'll be, you know, absolutely our goal to make sure that we are getting that word out as soon as possible.
This is Wenda. I didn't, I don't have any questions per se, I just wanted to make a comment. I think the communications that have been coming out of the school have been great. I feel like I've seen it from all aspects, from my email, from my social media, the video that you and Angela did was very helpful, especially for families who put faces to name. So I just wanted to say thank you for the communication and I know that will be the same moving forward.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, this is Sherry Clydes. I just wanted to reiterate to me that Martha said about Chief Buckley. When we attended the pandemic preparedness meeting a week or two ago, I thought he was very knowledgeable and it was really helpful to have him there at a local level. And so I just want to reiterate what Martha said, that that was really a great addition to the committee.
I agree.
This is David. And Martha, I personally would like, I mean, I want to thank you and like the whole administration. I mean, you guys have gone, in my opinion, well above and beyond what lots going on. And I mean, you've taken the leadership, our school district and the administration have taken the leadership where there's a bill. And I have to commend you and the administration and the teachers and all the way down to like everyone involved in the school, custodian, nurses, the kind of, taking this up and doing it in my job. It might be an excellent job.
Thanks. I will, any other comments there or questions?
Okay, one question. I'll get on the comments, I think the district has done a fantastic job at all levels with the communication and just the fact that the teachers were able to get this stuff put together so quickly is kind of amazing, in my opinion. On that note, so as you're talking about potentially or preparing for an extension of this, is that happening currently or are we waiting? What does that look like, I guess? Are the teachers gonna be working on that next week, the following week? Like, how does that work if, for packet pickups or whatever, that might be needed? Or have we gotten there yet?
Right, we're not quite there yet. So as you know, next week is scheduled to be spring break. I do know different teachers have been thinking ahead, you know, I think I was talking to our early learners team and they said, "We think we have 35 days." You know, I mean, just because they kept sort of putting together lessons and lessons that could be easily strung together. The middle schoolers, because of the use of Chromebooks and being used to kind of that flipped classroom or virtual classroom, doesn't feel so unusual to that age group and to teachers that are used to doing more of the one-to-one device work. I think that would be a lot easier. So we're gonna have to think about that really in this next week ahead and that will be the next thing for us to consider. Do we do, can we do another sort of small group socially-distanced onsite preparation? What do people need from us to prepare remotely to potentially not come back in? We had talked about, so one of the things, and most of you are parents in the district, families got packets, Chromebooks. So next steps would be, we have already started considering, would we want to deploy iPads in grades K through 2? Our librarians have said, as I sit here in the Hauser Library, mostly by myself, other than with Marjorie and Jim, even sharing actual resources, right? Distributing actual books and materials to families and those are some of our next phase considerations. And what I can tell you is we're already thinking about those things, we just haven't implemented on those things yet.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? I know our next, our next item on the superintendent's report is actually a progress on construction and I know we have Ramesh Neer participating virtually and I'm gonna turn that item over to Ramesh to give us an update on where we are with construction.
Martha, this is Jeff. I think I had my phone on mute, I wanted to make a comment, sorry about that. I wanted to sort of reiterate what everyone else said, which is to thank the administration, the teachers and the custodial, all the rest of the staff are really not only keeping things going, but you know, keeping things going in every orderly and professional way in this circumstance. I think it's really a testament to the quality of our district, so just wanted to put my two cents in on that.
All right, thank you.
Hi there, everyone. This is Ramesh. So when we broke last time, in last month, after the board meeting, we were looking at the remainder of the subcontractors and I just want to give you a progress on that. We have received all the subcontractors at this time. We reviewed them, we've had an issue with just one of them, it's in the process of getting fixed. And we received certificates of insurance, we have the performance bond, insurance certificates of the overall project. So all those pre-construction elements essentially have been brought online. We started construction at Ames last month with basically the ComEd utility work that had to get done before the start of the overall construction project. And with fits and starts, working with ComEd. And then the Comcast, that's working about 80% complete. And ComEd intends to complete the remainder of their work in the next week and a half to two. They haven't indicated any shutdowns on their part. They were there, in fact, doing an inspection at Ames yesterday. Having said that, and when pandemic broke out, there was initially a thought that the children being away from school, we would be able to jump-start our project. I mean, for some reason, I don't know why, we thought it wouldn't affect us, you know, in construction, rather silly. Because almost immediately after that, you know, the issue about social, about safe social distancing came about and we could not enforce any way, we couldn't force any of the workers to come to site because the process required everyone to stay a safe distance. So having said that, we reached out over the last couple of days to the CFO of Burgland, Kevin Geschrender. We spoke with him about what are the plans that they have. And he indicated to us that as of today, they have not received any official notification that they're not supposed to work. But on the other hand, just this afternoon, a lot of automobile industries and their unions have created closure in those industries. And I'm almost certain it'll trickle down to the construction industry as well. And there's a distinct possibility that union workers will not be able to head to construction sites as the country shuts down. So with that in mind, I mean, we have still gone ahead with the initial steps that we needed to take. We got past zoning last week, which was a huge step ahead. And in fact, the Village Roadside meeting is tomorrow, where we expect them to approve the zoning changes that, variations that we had requested. So all those things will proceed as per sequence. And everything seemed to be really going somewhat in a, you know, in a very positive manner till this pandemic hit. And I'm afraid to say that, I mean, our recommendation has changed from where we stood last month. And as I said, I've been in this business now just past 30 years, 31 years, I've never come across a construction situation like what we faced today, which is uncertainty about what happens tomorrow. I mean, especially in a project where we had started to lock down all our numbers, we had a favorable schedule, we had a good contractor, we had an ultimate schedule was really working to our advantage. And now suddenly we had a position there, I can't tell you what happens tomorrow or what happens two weeks from now. So having said that, our recommendation really is right now that at Ames, which is the largest project, we have already begun demolition, there was some interior demolition done, some portion of the facade was taken out as part of the foundation work that is in progress right now, which we have to do to keep our overall schedule intact. We recommend that that work would proceed, you know, as and until we receive notification that we have to shut down. The other three projects, Blight and Hollywood, anyway, were summer projects, so we were not going to expend money on that. At Central, we are beginning to look forward to starting construction with spring break and it impacts almost, we're going, planning to install the crane this Friday and Saturday. We are recommending that we take a pause on that project because if the crane is installed and the project pauses, you'd be responsible for renting, for the rental costs, the daily and weekly rental costs off the crane with no work being done. And a crane rental is pretty substantial. So our recommendation is that we would pause the project till this, the issue is, to be a clearer understanding as to how we can proceed with the project. So Ames, we proceed cautiously till we receive additional information. I mean, workers are still on site, they're coming in right now. We haven't had, we've had one or two workers not show up, but overall, the project has continued. But at Central, we would like to stop. We'll reevaluate our schedule going forward once the pandemic clears, while Blight and Hollywood are not really affected at this time because their work was scheduled for summer. So that's really where we stand right now. And I believe that no one could have foreseen the situation that we find ourselves in. Obviously, there will be additional costs because the contractor has carrying costs. But we're trying to minimize the additional cost to the school district as much as possible. I've asked Burgland to draw up a list of items that they can put on hold so that we do not incur additional costs. And we'll evaluate that tomorrow and the after to get off this stage. My real idea is to preserve schedule and budget as much as possible. And we're gonna really put a pause on all our costs on the project right now, other than Ames.
Ramesh, that's really the only reasonable thing to do. This was Joel.
Yes, pretty much. I mean, I could not think of anything else. As I said, I've reached out to the unions, they were as much in the dark at last. They just said that we cannot force any of our workers to show up and the likelihood of a shutdown is very high.
Ramesh, I wanted to ask you that, David. I have a question. I agree with, I mean, it's, I think that's the only option that we really have at this point. I guess my one question I have is those regarding the contract. I don't recall, like, you know, what are like the sort of, what are the clauses in the contract for this, that, who pays what? We're sort of lost, I mean, you're moving forward with these schools and now it looks like realistically, Central's not gonna happen and very well, Blight and Hollywood won't happen this year either. Because what are, I mean, what does the contract say in situations like this?
So right now, Burgland is committed to delivering the projects by August 20th. So they had a fixed set of general conditions that they had bid to us, you know, it was turbo last year. So they are held accountable for spending that money. But my plan is that my whole thing, all the three projects, we would stop the spending on those general conditions except for their project manager and the superintendent working on Ames. So we can capture, the remainder of the costs will just go on hold for right now. I mean, we don't have to give them the entire amount, but what I'm saying is that we would be only responsible for what they've spent to date on that portion. The subcontract side, we do have a commitment on payments to Peace and Crop, which is the elevator contractor, because if you recall, at the January board meeting, I said that we had to make a payment to them, otherwise they would not order the elevator that we need to get installed by July of this year. Now, that payment had to be made, so we would, we do own two elevators in due course, but they are boxed elements. We know that we have to install these elevators at some time, one at Ames and one at Central. So it's not a loss, it's just that we own the equipment, that's the important thing. Now, ultimately, if the loss in time doesn't exceed more than, say, a month, that's the most optimistic position I'm taking. If loss not exceeding a month, the construction may spill over into September, end of September or end of October. We would be responsible for some sort of pro-rated cost to Burgland. And I hate to say this, but it's true that we're entering into a recessionary period. So the likelihood of any of the subcontractors walking away from us is very low. They are going to come back and they'll want to complete these projects and they may even hold their prices because I just feel that the labor market's gonna shift very rapidly in the next couple of weeks. So the likelihood that they stay with us and hold their costs is very high. And therefore, we should be able to complete the projects at a later date, not August 20th, but more like September, end of September, October. You'll have to look at the impact it has on school operations and you have to build some safety barriers to distance the school classrooms from the construction. We have to look at those elements, but that would be our best-case scenario that we have. But there are definitely additional costs that we're going to bear, there's no doubt about that. I'd be going to try and limit that to as little as possible. And pretty much putting a pause on all overhead costs throughout the project.
This is Jeff Miller. Dan, I have a question for you as the board president. I wonder if it makes sense for you to call on people, like, just maybe go around the virtual table, because it's a bit hard to see who's gonna be asking questions so we don't talk over each other. Does that, would that make sense, do you think, just to?
I'll be sure.
Ask people and ask their questions, that way we know we're not all talking at once.
All right, yes, okay, well, so Jeff, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, I just had a follow-up on David's question, which is, I didn't understand everything Ramesh said, I know it's a sort of a complicated situation. But what David, I think, was asking, if I understood him correctly, was now these contracts we have, these various contracts are for legal agreements that have various clauses and penalties, I assume, for workers being delivered, you know, late or on time or whatever. And this is a very unique situation. And I can imagine that if things are delayed, as Ramesh is saying, that they might be, there could be various causes for that. There could be that the contractor is not showing up, the workers are not showing up, in which case the responsibility would be the contractors or it could be all kinds of different reasons. So I guess, I guess my question as opposed to David's is that, you know, do we have a firm handle on the legalities here, which is, you know, we don't want to, if the contractor is not completing the work on time because their workers are not showing up, is that a different situation than if we're sort of putting a hold on things, right?
Yes and no. The contract that they have signed is a standard AIA 133 and a 101, which has a postimisure clause in it, which covers acts of God, issues that are beyond their control, government regulations, issues, top of your work, there are all sorts of clauses in there. And that goes reded by our attorney and those were considered acceptable clauses. I mean, they're pretty standard in most contracts. So if it's something that's beyond the subcontractor's process, we really can't hold them to that standard.
So then my second follow-up question on that is, I mean, you, you, Ramesh, which is that if the economy, as may happen, goes into recession, it may be the case that there's a lot of construction firms that are looking for work. Do we have the option of renegotiating these contracts at a better rate or is that something that's not possible at this point?
No, because this was an open market bid, then we would have to open it up to the people who lost the bids as well, they would ask them to come back in. I don't think we've ever done that before. I mean, the best situation we would have is that you would ask Burgland to go out and renegotiate all the numbers and come back to us and present the least additional cost to us. And as I said, my belief is that with the market rate is, we should be able to hold numbers where we are, except for the overhead costs that Burgland has, so. All right, thank you.
And we'll certainly continue to review this with our attorney and Ramesh. I appreciate Ramesh sort of keeping a handle on these complex details.
I did talk to Brian. Uh, I did talk to Brian yesterday, because he had an issue on the subcontract, so he is reviewing the additional clauses that were added by the contract. In fact, I think it's almost a direct result, result of the pandemic that they added a contract, a clause in there, which was not, uh, that we had not seen before, so Brian wants to take a look at it.
Uh, who's next?
I, I sort of kind of confirmed that, okay, to pause the projects?
This is Joel. I, I think, based on the fact that we would be, uh, responsible for the rental of that crane, pausing Central is certainly a very reasonable approach. Um, and at this point, we wait for things to develop, to see what happens with, um, Blythe and Hollywood. I don't know that there's any other reasonable options to move forward with. So I agree with your recommendations, Ramesh.
This is Sherry Kleiber. I certainly agree with Ramesh, and I wouldn't want to endanger any of the workers that might, uh, have to engage in any kind of contact with others that would endanger them in any other way. I, I don't know what else we could possibly do, but I think pausing is a good, a good option.
Uh, this is Linda Murphy. Yeah, I, I concur with everybody. I think Ramesh's recommendations are appropriate.
I, I agree for the same reasons, you know, worker safety, costs, all that kind of stuff. I've been kind of waiting for the construction industry to get hit by some of this stuff, quite honestly, so, um, if you're forcing that happening in the near future, for multiple reasons, it, it kind of seems like a prudent thing to do, where we can.
So this is Dan Hunt. Uh, now, Russ, you, what you were describing earlier was a situation or a scenario where this resolves within a month. I guess, uh, the, the obvious question becomes then, what, what are we looking at if this goes longer? And what kind of exposure does the district have at that point?
Um, if it goes longer than a month, and we are looking at an, an extended shutdown, well, then we're looking at pretty much, um, we really would shut down Blythe and Hollywood, because we've not started them at all. Central, we own some bit of, a piece of equipment on it, the elevator. We would have to renegotiate the contract and a new timeline as to when we can start the project. For example, if we are looking at a restart in May or June or July, obviously, August, September's out, we would not be able to finish the project by then. We would have to extend the project to an acceptable date to the school district. Um, obviously, Ames is something that we've already committed to, there's demolition that has taken place, there's foundation excavation that's in progress, we have passed the zoning, we passed a lot of the regulatory, uh, requirements. That's one, that's something that we would really have to look at seriously, how to complete that project, to make that building viable. So we would have to cross that bridge when we get to a restart. I mean, and I tried to give you the most optimistic one, which was, let me say, now mid-April, the PS restarting, we can complete the job by September, you know, for minimal additional cost. But if we get beyond that, we're looking at a whole different scenario.
Any, anything else? Oh, go ahead.
Martha?
I was gonna say, is there anything else related to the construction update?
Well, I, I just wondered what the, those elevators that we own, those are at the vendor site?
Uh, right now, they are down due and going into production. It takes about 16 weeks to produce. So we are just about, in fact, um, we're gonna toss a check for them tomorrow, and they're going to production soon after that.
So I guess, I, after those are completed, I'm wondering where those reside?
Uh, so, uh, once Peace and Crop come and tell us that they are ready to deliver, in their contract, it says that they would hold it, uh, in their warehouse for 30 days. Uh, if the project gets delayed beyond that, we would move that to what's called a bonded warehouse, meaning it's under safe, uh, it's under our safe, uh, locations, and we have to pay a, a rental cost to the bonded warehouse to save, to, uh, to the safety and take keep off that elevator boxes. So the first 30 days, Peace and Crop is responsible for it, to once it's completed and manufactured. But this will not happen till sometime in July.
This is, uh, this is Jeff Miller. Um, Ramesh, um, I, I, you shared a lot of details, and it seems like it was a very comp, obviously a very complicated situation, a lot of, um, considerations. And I, I guess, to me, it was very hard for me to, to make any judgments on, on all of this, um, you know, so given that, you know, I'm inclined to go with, you know, with your expert opinion, but I, I guess at the same time, I think it would be interesting for you to, to just summarize in writing the pros and cons of the various options that confront the district right now. And if the board agrees, I would, I would propose to Ramesh, you know, share, share his analysis with the board in writing, so people can sort of think about it, but then give Martha the authority to, to make the final call, and say, you know, do we pause this now, or, 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 or do something else? Um, because making a decision, you know, on the fly, after just having heard all these, you know, complicated details, I, I find that very hard to do. So that's kind of what I would propose, if, if that's something the, the board would read with.
Um, this, this is David. Jeff, I do like the, I mean, there is a lot that's coming at us, um, right now. Uh, and I think that, that would be helpful. I guess my, my thing is rearing the crane though, on, uh, which is supposed to be, this Friday, correct, Ramesh?
Yes, in fact, uh, tomorrow, they were coming to lay down the pad.
Okay.
And I, I ran up in the sky and actually told them, um, not to, not to show up tomorrow, because we don't want to connect to it.
Right. I mean, I, I would, I agree with, 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 with your recommending, Jeff, however, I don't feel comfortable waiting for that right up, given everything that's going on. I don't really want to move forward with that crane, because, um, I, I do think this, I mean, uh, I'm hoping for the best, but I'm really having a lot of hesitation that this is actually, that we're gonna be able to accomplish everything, or even a, a model to come up with, we're trying to accomplish this year, given everything that's going on.
Mm, I agree. Yeah, I mean, I, if something is gonna happen tomorrow, I, I agree, it makes sense to pause, but if everyone agrees, you know, with the general idea, which is, get, get the analysis in writing, and let Martha, everyone can see it, and then let Martha sort of make the final call on, on what to do, you know, maybe, maybe other than the crane, um, within the next couple of weeks, that maybe that would be, give us more time to reflect, give Martha more time to reflect on, on what the different options are here. Not to say that Ramesh is not providing all the information he is, it's just pretty hard for me to, to take it all in and, and understand what's going on, you know, in, in a short period of time, in this, this call.
You're right, Jeff. I will write that memo for you. I will write the memo. In fact, I spoke with Martha about it earlier too, and I would follow up in writing. It's just, the timeline just got compressed, so.
Right, right.
It was about 2 o'clock this afternoon, and knowing that this was, you know, such a significant issue to the board, to the community, to all of us, that, uh, felt bringing it up for discussion tonight. And I appreciate kind of people weighing in, right? This isn't a formal action item, so Ramesh will write that memo, and then we'll also review it one more time with our attorney, and then we will certainly make, make those decisions. But I, it, it sounds like there's a sort of clear consensus to put a hold on that crane, because that is a significant cost item that's immediately upon us.
The crane is too much risk for the district.
Yep. They're very. If I have a crane, if I have a crane at the school site, monks doing nothing. Correct. The risk that we would have.
Okay.
This is David, to add a little levity, at least, we can maybe have that as a playground nonparticular.
Yeah.
Very nice.
All right, anything else? Oh, good.
The second part of that wasn't that during spring break, we were supposed to start demolition at Central and make the opening in the masonry wall, boy, and that would have been a mess if we had done that, so.
All right. Anything else related to construction? I just have, um, a couple of, oh, sorry, I should pause. Anything else related to?
This is Joel again. This is Joel again. If, just, Ramesh, if you could keep Martha up to date with the, and I know you are, so that's.
Yeah.
That's a given, but just keep Martha up to date with the more global aspects of this, just so that the board continues to remain comfortable with, uh, the recommendations.
Absolutely. And anytime I hear back from the, from Burgland, or get feedback on legal issues, I've reached out to either Jim or to Martha on these issues.
Yeah, we've been in close communication. So, um, anything else then related to construction and Ramesh's comments?
No, but one thing to add on Jeff's, just a quick, maybe like procedural thing for the rest of this meeting, um, there is a raise hand button, and also like the chat message, which might help in kind of navigating questions and talking over each other, in addition to like a roll call thing, so.
It's one of the Zoom apps, I didn't install the Zoom app, I'm just on my.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, we'll leave it on.
No, this is Sherry, I'm calling from my phone also.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
All right, okay, y'all, so the next one, thank you for mentioning that.
Okay.
If, if it's, if it's agreeable to everyone, if we come to a point of discussion again, we can call people out, board members by name, so that everyone will have their window for, for comment, would that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just had, like, three other quick items in the superintendent's report. So, and Ramesh mentioned it, that, you know, it felt incredibly important last week that the Riverside zoning and planning, um, approved our project for Ames School, obviously, with the village board meeting tomorrow night. It still is important, but I know this just, this shift in timeline is significant, but I wanted to make sure that was, was noted. I also wanted to make a note that our behavior interventions committee met, um, and approved our ongoing policies and procedures around addressing behavior interventions, particularly for children with disabilities. Sherry, I know you participated on that committee, and thank you. That also seems like a long time ago, but a very important procedural part in our ongoing review, and making sure that, uh, our school services and discipline are, are safe and supportive for all children, so thank you for that. And then, um, I had also, that we had had an item on here to change the board meeting date at the June 2020 date. To be really honest, all those dates seem so far off in the future now, with things, um, on schedules that may, may change yet, that, uh, I think if we just acknowledge that there may be a change to the June board meeting, I think that was something the board was comfortable with. There may be other changes as, as we move forward, so if, if we can just sort of maintain a sense of flexibility there, that's probably the best, um, the best plan right now. And tho- those are all my items.
They're both on my calendar, so I'm good with that for now, and we'll see how this all plays out.
Right. We'll be, I think, you know, if we need to make adjustments, what is our requirement, Margie? It's a 48-hour. We have to let, you know, make modifications to any schedule then, so. All right. Um, so that's the superintendent's report. So Dan, I turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Uh, next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? This is Joel, second.
This is David, second.
I think we need to have the secretary read the consent agenda?
Yes, I was gonna offer that next, Russ. Can you, uh, read the agenda?
I can. So the consent agenda for tonight is, uh, from the February 19, uh, 2020, minutes of the first closed session, the regular business meeting, and the second closed sessions, the meetings from the March 4th, 2020, first closed session, special meeting, open session, and second closed session that night. The personnel report has presented, um, the payables pre-list as of February 28th, 2020, payables pre-list as of March 18th, 2020, and that is it.
Is there any discussion? Margie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead? Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next item is the, uh, resolutions for honorable dismissal for, uh, two employees. At this time, is there a motion for, uh, to approve the resolution of honorable dismissals?
This is Jeff, second.
Uh, this is Joel, second. Is there any discussion? All right, if not, Margie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy? Mr. Barsadi? Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Um, there is an item, or key note, or note for the Riverside Education Council, is there any discussion there tonight?
No one's present here physically.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so next, uh, for board member comments. Uh, first off, I, on behalf of the board, I, I would like to, uh, offer our condolences to you, Martha, and, uh, on the loss of your mother, uh, over the last week, and understanding this has been a tremendously difficult time, uh, for you, and, and, let alone all that's going on in the rest of the world. We're definitely very appreciative of your time and attention that you've taken, uh, in that, uh, you've continued to work and work hard, work with your colleagues, uh, and to, to pilot this district, uh, through turbulent times amongst, uh, times that are less than optimal for yourselves, so definitely appreciate that, and, and definitely deeply express our deep condolences.
Thank you.
Are there any other board member comments?
Uh, this is Sherry Kleiber, I also just, um, having a mother that's gravely ill, I, I can't imagine the loss, and I'm absolutely just devastated for you and thankful so much for your work. Um, and I guess the second thing I wanted to mention is, having gone to the school today to pack up my child's materials, like many of us did, um, I really appreciate, there were a lot of volunteers there, um, from the staff passing out materials, and it was extremely organized, and I just want to thank everybody that did that, and making us feel like we had something to do, that was different and organized, and, um, preferred all a lot, and it was really well organized, so I want to thank our parents for that as well.
Thank you.
No, this is, uh, David, and I'd like to echo, um, the comments of the nade. I mean, thank you, Martha, I mean, this must have been, I can only imagine, um, the last week. Um, so, I, again, I just appreciate all the efforts, and everything that you've done for the district. Um, I also want to say that, um, I, uh, I know in Hollywood, they were doing, it was very well managed, the packet pickup, and, um, I mean, there was, uh, and I know this is gonna be pressing, I don't recall the custodian's name, but they were using their opening door, someone at the desk door, people were just, it was very orderly, very respectful. I'd say, uh, my hat's off to the whole staff.
Yeah, it's really been, I mean, it's, it's been impressive, the work that our, our teams have done, the way people have worked together, worked quickly together, and just really with that sense of what do our children need, what do our families need, and how do we get it done? So, totally agree.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, this is Sherry, just had to say one more thing that can, I, I can't imagine, um, I'm only having to do a fraction of this, and a different kind of teacher, but to have to reconfigure your entitled, entire teaching model in less than, you know, a few days is extremely difficult, so thank you to all the teachers that spent time reorganizing their lessons, and trying to figure out how to engage everyone from far away. their lessons and trying to figure out how to engage everyone from far away. Thank you.
We're absolutely thankful that we planned for the two snow days that we anticipated. We were so excited a couple of weeks ago that we thought we had missed snow days. And here we are, ready for a pandemic. So, the irony is in life.
Let's go through the rest of the board here. So Wes, any, any comments?
No, not that, I mean, I can, you know, everything and comment, just kind of reiterate the comments I made earlier about how well the district has managed this and everybody involved in everything has been pretty spectacular, I think. And grabbing the situation in such a quick period of time. But other than that, no, no other comments.
So Jeff, any comments on your end?
No, I agree with what everyone else has already said.
Joel?
I do not have better words to add to this, other than agreeing with everyone else.
Linda?
Uh, no, yes, I concur. And yeah, reiterating, thanking all the teachers. But no, I think we can move forward.
Okay. If there are no more board comments, we will move to committee reports. I'm wondering, are there any committee reports tonight, or should we move on?
Um, this is David. And just to give everyone, I am part of the pandemic preparation committee. And Pam Shaw, she was redoing one of the policies, policy, policy. And we were going to discuss that, but then things sort of just all apart last week. So we didn't really get to it. But I, it's something we're going to be addressing, but just a few minor modifications to that.
All right. So that was the policy committee.
Nothing from personnel.
Nothing from capabilities.
Nothing from finance.
No, nothing from education.
Okay. Then that takes us to the next item on under old business. This is a memorandum of understanding for the furniture selection package. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding regarding the furniture selection package as presented?
This is Linda. I moved.
This is David. Second.
Is there discussion?
In light of your question, Wes?
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, that was, this is David. That was my question as well.
Whether or not we should be moving forward with furniture?
Should we go around to the board, each member?
And Ryan Kelly, can I just interject? Ryan Kelly should be on the phone, right? Ryan, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, so Ryan is on the phone, and you could even direct questions to him on this.
So Wes, I think, can I, do you ask first?
Sure. So in light of Remesh's funny, delightful articulation of everything going on, should we be talking about buying furniture at this point? Maybe I'll throw that to Ryan? Like, how, where does that stand in with everything else going on?
Um, I think that's a fair question. And I think we need to give some consideration to Blight and Central and Hollywood. Ames, I think we'll move forward as best we can in terms of the construction. With the furniture, if that is completed and out to bid at the end of March, that really gets us furniture for August, now that date may be pushed. But if that, if we're looking at the best case scenario of one month shutdown, then I think we need to maybe track this with that month, you know, pushback. So I think it is a fair question that we need to look at this in total with construction. The one thing I will say is that you do get economy of scale in bundling this furniture package. So there's some value to that. But obviously, we have to, you know, assess the risk in any of the construction moving forward, given the potential shutdowns. So that answers your question directly. But I think that's something that we should look at with Remesh.
Joel, I think I heard you ask a question as well?
Uh, no, I just, Ryan, right now, this looks like about 250 hours or so of work. Is that really what it takes to select furniture? I don't, not having, and I know that it's a time materially basis, not to exceed, but just in general, I not quite understand, I understand the proposal. Could you explain a little bit more of the effort that's involved?
Sure, absolutely. So I mean, some of this has happened through the design development process with the building and construction development, or construction document process with the building, designing those spaces, thinking about what kinds of furnitures work best, and working with the administration and staff to understand that in general in concept. What this represents is really drilling down what those specific pieces of furniture are, working them into the budget, putting that package together to put out to bid competitively. And then after that, you know, I'll call it the construction administration phase of it, but making sure that it is coordinated, it's installed properly in the right location, and that it happens on time. So that's really to put that to the process.
Thank you. The fact that you're, you are managing the execution of the delivery as well as would justify the numbers you're showing, I believe. So thank you for that explanation.
That's one part that often can get kind of overlooked. It seems easy to put furniture in a room, but there's a lot of things that can go wrong on that end. So managing that process and seeing that last little bit to completion really just ticks it off the district's plate.
Okay. Yeah, no, that was, that was the part I wasn't understanding. So thank you.
Sherry, do you have any questions on this?
Uh, no, I think they were just answered. Yeah, it seemed, it seemed high to me. At this point, it seems a little bit premature, depending on if we go ahead. I agree with maybe tabling the other schools that aren't going to be in immediate construction phase. So that's how I'm feeling at this point.
Hi, this is Linda. A quick question. So say we approve this MOU tonight, and everything does get delayed, what happens then? We still, do we, are we, I don't know my exact question, but we need to approve the MOU in case it doesn't get delayed, and we need to report. However, if it gets delayed, or, you know, what happens then, is my question.
I think it would get- Go on, Ryan.
What am I, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was, I didn't know if that question was directed to me. I think that if it does get delayed, the work is done, the package is put together. If it doesn't go out for bid, it's ready to go out for bids. You can put that out to bid at any time. The construction administration portion of it, I'll call it the, seeing it through to delivery, is still built into this MOU. So that happens whenever that event takes place. So this end of it is, there's no, there's no risk here, as long as these projects move forward. We would still, you know, deliver that service whenever that happens.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. I just wanted to make sure there was no sort of time restriction or any, you know, any payment being due, even if there's nothing going on. So.
I mean, the one thing that we will have to watch is obviously when we'll need the furniture and how the lead times are going to be affected based on-
Right.
-supply chain issues that may come up.
Right, right. Thank you.
Sure. Joel, are you wanting to add something?
No. Well, I think this somewhat fits in with some of the things Remesh already said, which is as we get closer to potentially ordering furniture, to make sure that we don't end up in a position where we have to pay to store anything. But I think that's something that's going to be a future issue, and we don't need to address right now.
Dave, did you have any questions?
No. Linda's question, like, Joel's questions, Wes's question, they answered for me. My, I just sort of, everything's unanswered. So yeah, I'm okay with, when we're forward with this, but obviously keeping an eye on, I, like, we don't want to be spending money to store things that we don't have a place to put them.
So Ryan-
Any questions on your end?
Sorry.
Yeah, actually, you have a few questions. Thanks, Dan. So Ryan, so just a couple, a couple of questions for you. First of all, I just wanted to thank you. You watched the video for your presentation for planning zoning, and I thought you and your team, Remesh and everyone put together a really good presentation. You guys did a really good job with that. It was obviously not easy thing to get through all of that, but you guys did a really good job with that. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Secondly, in terms of this memorandum of understanding, I see you have a sort of a 216 number of 35,000. And you also have an exhibit that shows the hourly rate of the various people employed by your firm. But you don't indicate, so what I don't see on there is any sort of expected, the expected cost. I don't see like how many hours people are going to work. I see you allocate four meetings, and I'm wondering like, well, if you could tell us like, how many hours the meeting's going to take, and what the hourly costs are going to be that. And then just going to break this down, like what the expected value is as opposed to the maximum value.
Sure. I mean, I think that, I mean, I certainly could provide that detailed breakdown. Typically, these furniture meetings have lasted with four schools going through with each principal and the district administration, two, three hours. So you figure that, that would involve our interior designer, myself as a project architect for this project, and then Steve, our partner. So, I mean, I could, I could certainly provide that detailed breakdown for each of these. Like just quickly add it up. But that's kind of how it would go, two to three hours for that. And then, you know, a handful of hours, mostly by our interior designer, Lindsay, to really evaluate the furniture, select it, put that package together and submit it back. So I'm starting to provide that to you.
Okay, that'd be very interesting, because when I see that the maximum number is 35,000, I don't know if you're familiar with our salaries of our staff, but our average teacher salary, which might be in your career teacher, is making 70,000. So that would mean that we're paying essentially, if we paid the full amount, the 216 amount, 35,000, that'd be cool and paying a teacher for half a year's work, a sort of senior teacher, which strikes me as a lot for reading furniture. Is 12% if the furniture cost is 300,000, which I think is you sort of have your estimate on there for Remesh, that'd be a 12%. So I guess I'm thinking that this is much, much higher than I would have expected. So if you can provide additional detail on where those numbers are coming from, I would find that helpful.
I'm just-
On the schedule side of things, so certainly a note about your timelines. And this is sort of a general comment, I guess. It's not just for this project, but it happens, it's happened several times already. So, I don't know, you've probably worked with a lot of boards, but typically, at least with our board, we generally have a rule that we have to see something and discuss it once before we even consider voting on it. And so in this project, in this particular proposal, it looks like it was brought to the board on the February 19 meeting, and you have a schedule in there that basically says, you know, in February, you'll be, you'll do, you'll have, you know, all the meetings, meeting one, meeting two, and then early March, you'll be meeting three, you know, mid-March, you'll have meeting four. It'd basically be done with all your meetings by the middle of March, where we are right now, basically.
Sure.
And so the way these things work is that it's impossible for us, even in the best case scenario, even if there are no questions, we're already, we've always said this is great. There's no way that we could possibly follow this, this schedule. And it sort of says on this, this time is of the essence, you know, we have to do this and everything. But with this, you know, if we start in February, just, we can't even vote on it until March, let alone start on it. So I guess, you know, the playground, I saw the same, we looked at it for the first time in October, and the schedule we had in that proposal had us like, you know, going out to bid by December, when we could not have possibly even voted on it until November, again, if there were no questions. So I guess in general, it might be worth, you know, having your team over these proposals together, give them to the board, if they are, if they are sort of time sensitive, which I think they are, you know, three or four months in advance of when you think you need to start, so that we can have these discussions, so we can give ourselves the amount of time that's necessary by our own rules. And if the board has questions, it would give you time to respond and, you know, allow us to make good decisions. So that's, I guess, just a general request on that.
Sure. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to say, I think in this one in particular, I would say, as well as the playground, knowing that the building was being constructed, I mean, your point is well taken, number one. Knowing that the building was going to be constructed, the furniture would be needed, and that the spaces were being designed, some of those initial conversations happened earlier on. But again, your point is well taken.
Okay, thank you. I guess the third, the third question is more, this is a little more open-handed, but I know that since I've been the board, the district has been buying furniture. And I know that, you know, in part because every so often, when we attend a meeting, some of the furniture that we're actually sitting at will be different than it was the last time. So, for example, we were at Light Park a couple of weeks ago, and the tables are new. And those tables are new, the chairs are new. And this is my, my impression is that like, I, whenever, whenever this has happened, this happened up at the library, Hollis Avenue's happened, the library at Central's happened, all these, all those districts, all the schools, the way it needs it. I can't say like, oh, wow, this is like, this, this table is a great improvement on the old table, or these chairs are much better than the old chairs. So I really have some questions about the processes that we're following in buying this stuff, you know. We're like, why are we replacing furniture that was perfectly adequate and buying new furniture? Now, I know, I know new buildings, we're new spaces, we will need new furniture. But I guess as a general point, like, I see us buying furniture, but I'm not like, it's not obviously, it's not obvious to me that we're buying stuff that's necessary or would be better than what we asked for in some of these cases. So that's a more general comment, I guess, that's sort of directed to, to the committee that's working on this.
I think we need to try to look, you know, work with the administration, look at the district as a whole, and see, you know, what new spaces we had to fill, what existing furniture could be reused, reallocated, and certainly not to be redundant. So, again, your point's well taken, but we try to look at that as a whole district and not just one, one individual building.
Thank you. Those are my, those are my questions.
Okay. So I hit everybody. I'm trying to remember who's all spoken. Is anyone left? Any additional comments?
I think you hit everybody, Dan, but kind of Jeff's last thing is we were going through. So the timeline listed in here, so this already started? Do we actually have the inspiration of visiting meeting, vision meeting, and the product concepts and types, meeting number one, meeting number two? Have those already happened?
Yeah, so some meetings have already happened. That's the other pragmatic thing I was going to insert here, is that we aren't going to be able to complete this whole design and visioning process in the way that DLA rolled it out or suggested it. So, so I think we're going to have to make decisions based on what we know. I do think, kind of to the point of, you know, where we've replaced furniture that doesn't seem that unique or different, I do believe having the design support of DLA will help us make decisions that really address sort of some goals around innovation and variability and perhaps And then, you know, as Ryan pointed out, also being pragmatic, like, for example, Hollywood is going to take their same lunchroom furniture and put it in their lunchroom. They're not getting the new lunchroom, so that's kind of a moot point, at least not right now. So Hollywood is getting only really some small group learning and office furniture. Life would be furnishing a whole new classroom, you know? So again, I think it really is going to depend on each building in terms of where this ultimately goes. But I do think having had some initial conversations with DLA and with their designer has been helpful to address some of the questions that you just brought up. But I don't see how the time... The time that's in that MOU, I know it's not to exceed. We're not going to get to that point because we're not going to have the opportunities to meet with the staff in the way that we had wanted to. We're going to have to go with some feedback that we have now and at least, you know, potentially pull together some orders, even if it's not orders to be placed yet.
So essentially, we already know some of this not to exceed money because the time has already been put in, and a bill's forthcoming, but the rest of the timeline is going to be up to whenever we can fit it in and when we can actually legally get people together and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think we'll be making some more pragmatic decisions, real honestly, just out of necessity. We don't have the time to pull teams of people together to think about, you know, think in that way about some of the furniture.
So I guess that was my question on this, is that it's then essentially up to the administration to hold the discretion on what's actually going to get done and delivered by this MOU rather than what is outlined at present.
Right, so the MOU is really sort of around design and planning, and then the budget set up by Remesh is the actual budget for furniture. And then, right, we're going to have to make a decision around modification to that based on the conversation we're having tonight about postponement or changes in the construction plan. So we don't want to order furniture for spaces we're not going to have, obviously. So we're just going to have to do that in tandem and continue to communicate with the board about that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this?
Dan, this is Jeff. I guess I would like to move that we postpone or we table this motion until we get a pair back from Ryan on the expected cost, his analysis on the expected cost versus the maximum cost that I requested.
Can we add the cost that's already been spent as well?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this is Sheri. This is Sheri, I would report that.
Okay, I don't know if we've done this before, at least not for me. So did we have a motion? Do we need a second?
I think we would need a second, yes.
This is David. Wouldn't we just... Would we vote to not approve this then?
That's one possibility.
You can do it that way.
Not approve it and revisit it with new parameters.
Right, well, what would they...
To revisit it, yeah. Or to table it until further information is provided.
Because if you no vote it?
Right, then if we no vote it, we're rejecting it as opposed to table it
As opposed to table it and modify it, yeah.
Tableting it seems to be the most appropriate thing to do.
So we can modify the motion
Go ahead.
to table it.
Was that Sheri?
It's actually Margie giving us some procedural advice here from the sidelines.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to say it again louder, Margie.
Okay. If you... You can modify the motion to table it, to be revisited down the road in the future. So you can change the motion for this.
All right, so is there a motion to change this resolution to table it for future consideration?
No move. This is Joel. Second, this is Jeff.
Margie, can you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Ms. Murphy?
Can you repeat that one?
Ms. Murphy? Ms. Murphy?
Hi. Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Motion carried. All right.
Okay, next then is new business discussion, and I think Martha, we were looking to postpone that, the IASB strategic planning presentation?
Yes, that would be my recommendation, and sort of fitting with that, and I know Dan will make this announcement at the end of the meeting, but possibly even canceling the April 1 COW. I mean, the current advice is to only address essential items that require board action in order to sort of continue with essential operations of the district. So if, unless there's objection from the board, I would recommend that we postpone the IASB strategic planning presentation and cancel the April 1 COW meeting.
This is Sheri. I agree with Martha. I think she's right on the money in handling this pandemic very well, and I think we really do need to let the staff focus on what they need to focus on for now, and then we can continue our planning in the future. Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Agreed. We're all in agreement on that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then next issue, the fund transfers per financial projections.
So Jim's going to speak at the video microphone and at the... Being earshot here, the Zoom microphone. This is sort of new business initial discussion, as you know, for what... Something that would require action at the April meeting.
So in order to get the right amount of funds into the capital plan fund, capital projects fund, we've been talking in our projections, and the latest numbers is that we would need to move $19 million to $28,146 into the capital projects fund. And we moved $2 million earlier this year to start paying for some of the bills that are coming in. And now, this is just new business for discussion, but recommending that we move $13 million permanently from the educational fund to the capital projects fund, and $4 million to $28,146 permanently from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund. And that will match what we expect to spend out of the capital projects fund, at least the last projection. And I would bring this back next month. We have enough in the funds now to pay what's coming up, but at the April meeting, I asked that we take action on these two, and I can get the treasurer to transfer it the next day and be ready to pay the larger bills when they come in.
Jim, this is not argumentative. What is our expected outlay in the next time for sale?
I don't know if Remesh is still there, but we thought under a million, and I... And we have about 1.5 million in there now. So we have enough for now. We definitely have enough for the next month.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Jeff, do you have any questions on this?
No, I don't. Thanks, Dan.
Hey, Sheri?
No, no questions.
Wes?
Maybe just a more of a clarification. So given, again, just the light of everything that's happening so fast and that this whole thing might be put on hold, is it likely that these numbers are going to change from now until approval to be reduced if a couple of these projects get put on hold? Is it easy enough to transfer them back where they came from? Like, what... Not as well versed in the whole transferring of funds stuff? So I guess, once we move it, like, what happens if we don't need that money anymore? Like, do we just move it back? Or like, how do we manage these funds going forward with changes?
Right, so once we put it into the capital projects, it would sit in there until we spend it on capital projects. So right now, these are the ones we expect to spend them on. But if things change and there's still money remaining in there, then it would be sitting there until the next plan for a project, whether it's one that got delayed or something totally different.
Okay. So I guess just tossing that out, is it not necessarily looking for an answer, but I'm just wondering if maybe we're... As we get more information over the next couple of weeks, maybe we don't want to move as much? I don't know. Just more of a hypothetical right now, so that's all for me.
This is... Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dave.
No, this is Dave. I have just a question. What's the... I mean, what's the downside of... Is there a downside of moving the money to the capital fund? Do you see that we will eventually spend it? The question is, when we're going to spend it? Is that the bigger question? But I mean, is there a downside of moving it? I mean, so that's a question I have.
Well, when we move it, we'll still have 50... Over 50% in the operating fund balances. So we would have plenty of balance for day-to-day expenses. I guess the downside would be if $15 million of the projects got completed and we had $4 million in there until we came up with other capital projects to spend that $4 million on. And it could be used for capital maintenance also, like roof and... There'll be... If it's not these projects, there would be other projects that could be...
Could it be transferred back? Could it be transferred?
You can't transfer it back, though.
Okay, okay.
So one other... We could do one of the transfers and then the other one later.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Jim. Do you say it can or cannot be transferred back?
It cannot be transferred back. It needs to be spent on something capital related, whether it's these projects or even a repair project as opposed to the additions.
Well, if I can ask a question, then, based on the information we've heard tonight, is your recommendation still to move all this money? Do you think that... I'd like to know your opinion on that.
Well, my opinion was to stick with the plan that we have, and we wouldn't be taking action until a month from now. And I was thinking we'd have much more up-to-date information by then. And at that time, maybe we could choose to execute one or the other to keep things moving.
We'll certainly consult with Aristaleanis. I mean, this is truly, as we... You know, since it's from the beginning of the end of the meeting, right? It's like, all this is so rapidly evolving and that, you know, hearing it 2 o'clock this afternoon, the construction may be postponed or paused in a way that we had not fully anticipated. Now talking about the resolutions, which is something we had created this agenda, obviously, you know, by requirement for Monday night. So, yeah, so we can always... The board can always make a different decision, and we may come to you even with a different recommendation by the April 15th meeting, right? I mean, that's just our...
This is David. I didn't mean... I knew... I know this was not... I mean, I know things are changing literally by the hour. And so I was just... It was more of a question because I didn't anticipate you knowing, like, the construction was going to be delayed before we put this together. So I didn't... I mean, I didn't mean... I opened it. That's why I was more just curious and sort of what your thoughts were.
Right, well, the real question that everyone needed to know the answer to is, could it be transferred back? And no, we eventually need to spend it, but we would have enough in operating, you know, that's we've been talking about for a year, to make sure we had enough in operating.
Right.
And we could decide next month to do the $4 million, and then in May, look at the other one, depending on how things flow.
Okay. No, thank you, Jim.
Sure.
Okay. Linda, did you have any questions?
No, Wesley and David answered mine. I'm good. Actually, they asked mine, not answered. Jim answered.
Yeah, I didn't answer anything.
You asked my question, so thank you.
Well-asked and well-answered by all. I have no questions as well. All right. So next part is... Next item agenda, or agenda item, is public comment. Is there any additional public comments?
No one here.
No comment.
Bob Skolnick did enter the room here a while ago.
Okay, well, if not, then future meeting dates, April 1 committee, the whole meeting has been canceled.
Yes.
The April 15 regular business meeting, 7:00 p.m. in the Howzer Learning Resource Center. Gordon will enter into closed session at 6:30 p.m. if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 p.m. May 6, 2020, committee, the whole meeting, 7:00 p.m. at Hollywood Elementary School. May 20, 2020, regular business meeting, 7:00 p.m. in the Howzer Learning Resource Center. Gordon will enter into closed session at 6:30 p.m. if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 p.m. And if there is nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.